Reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to our June 1st meeting. And please note the council's in full attendance. First item on our agenda is, of course, items from council. Does anyone, there is one item there, obviously, in the flood, but does anyone have anything else they'd like to talk about first? Seeing no one. And if you think of something, just please let us know, or before we finish. Of course, the last week has been interesting with the flood and the rising river waters. Rick McBriar's here with the, our EOC, Emergency Operations Center. Of course, police chief and fire chief are here, and they've been heavily involved. So with that, I'd like to ask, just give us an update on what's occurred over the last seven days.
Great. So, once again, so Rick McBriar, I'm with Emergency Operations Center, or Victoria Emergency Management. So I got James Foote to bring up some graphics for me here. Kind of set the stage a little bit. First part of May, we started in on a very wet pattern throughout the state of Texas. First week of May brought in substantial rains. Second week of May, 10th through the 15th, brought in some more substantial rains, which then set the foundation for the 300 to 600 percent soil saturation in our watershed. And our watershed is just around the San Marcos, Wimberly, New Braunfels area. And so then what happened over the weekend, right before that, we were already increasing our river levels up to around 28 into almost to a major category flood stage, which set the stage for us to already have inundated riverine basins and things like that. And then the Memorial Day weekend, we had a flash flood that occurred just north up in the Blanco region, north of Wimberly, that brought 612 inches of rain. I think everybody probably saw that on the Memorial Day weekend. And so that set the, a major foundation for us to where all that water was going to be coming down towards us. James, do you have their slide? And there's the rainfall totals from May 23rd to 24th. You can see it, actually, I can't see the graphic on the white, but substantial amount of rain there. And so with the rivers already in max capacity into moderate for us down in this region, it quickly moved us into the possibility of going to a major flood category. And our major flood category is right at 29.5 for us. It comes out of the banks and starts causing some inundation problems into the low line areas. You can go back to the graphic. And so there's some footage here. Just shows you that James has pulled from the video that we had, from a drone that had flown through the Riverside Park and areas. And so he was able to capture a few photos there, so the inundation that we had. Meeting with the command and policy staff on Memorial Day itself, on the, that Monday, we felt it was very prudent for us to go ahead and do a, what we call a disaster declaration. And a disaster declaration sets the foundation for us to move forward with implementation of all of our emergency management plan, any of its 22 associated annexes, and also gives us the capability that if we had to prohibit movement in and out of certain affected areas, we can do just that. Sets somewhat of a foundation for us to move forward with possible FEMA reimbursement, but it's not the, that's not the means for a disaster declaration. Disaster declaration gives us the ability to actually manually evacuate somebody if we need so, or needed to. And so with that Monday, we set that foundation because we felt it was very prudent for us to look at the complexity of the problem that maybe getting ready to happen to Victoria, and how complex that problem was going to get for us. And so we definitely looked at that at a close, with a close eye, and decided that we want to do the declaration and then go into full operation mode for the emergency operations center, which we did, and have been that way all the way through this past weekend. Now we're going to be, start moving to what we call a recovery mode as the waters start to recede. We've done some preliminary damage assessments, and we'll be doing damage assessments with the infrastructure, Public Works on both sides, city and the county. So, that's kind of a quick snapshot. Feel free, if you want to come by the emergency operations center, we have this video in its entirety. It's pretty, pretty awesome to watch, actually, to see the amount of rain that we received and the floodwaters that came down towards, towards us, so.
Now, we do not need to continue the declaration.
No, sir.
We're going to remove that. It's on the agenda. That's not required. There's no need, so. By declaring the initial one, that set the stage for whatever legal requirements, as you described, so, okay.
Indeed.
Very good. So we will not be doing Council C1. Where's the best place for public to get info? Just the city website still?
Mm-hmm.
Do you still have that banner across the top?
Yes.
Where there's phone numbers in there and whatnot? Okay.
And then OC's doing continually updates on press releases, and it's out there, so.
Facebook, yeah, that's been productive, it appears.
But, and as we move over the next few days, I know there's a lot of interest in when Riverside Park's going to open up. Colby, we're going to look tomorrow morning to see kind of where we're at with the river going down, what we might can get open up, but no guarantees. And I know the Pump House is another, when is it going to be able to open back up? Again, we'll do that evaluation tomorrow to see what we can open up. The street department, Public Works, has been opening up streets, moving barricades back, as they're constantly evaluating those areas where we can get things opened up. So that's ongoing for the next several days. River's going to still be in a flood stage, but it'll be a moderate.
Be a moderate for probably next week or so.
So we're going to have to be careful, and we've got to get in Riverside to assess damages, to see what happened to the roads with the water over it, to make sure it's going to be safe for vehicles to travel, so. But we'll do that as quickly as possible, but at the same time keeping, you know, the safety of the public in mind when we're doing that, so it's very important. And I know the Texas Zoo's kind of waiting to hear from us on when we think we might get Riverside back opened up, so I've told her, you know, here's our plan for tomorrow, and we'll be in contact with Amanda Roach at the zoo. She's losing revenue every day they're closed, and so I know she's eager to get it, but also understands the need to make sure it's safe, so. Kind of, we need to still remind people, though, they should not go around barricades, either in vehicles or on foot, they're there for a reason. We encourage people not to play in the water. It's contaminated, so it's not real healthy for people to be playing in the floodwater. And, you know, we'll, again, we'll move quickly. Rick, can you think of any other reminders that the public?
No. Our preliminary damage assessment is only done by a visual inspection of the roadways that were inundated, and so if we have homeowners that had received damages in their home, to please give us a call at the flood hotline, or call the emergency operations center, and that way we can document that accordingly, and we can make sure that we move forward with that.
So no one should enter the park, whether it's around a barricade or any other means?
That's right. Vehicle, four-wheeler.
And police department, well, I mean, it's easy to walk in.
Bicycle.
Walk in from some other vantage points, but PD will cite people, because I understand that.
They have the capability to do that, yes.
Okay, the signage and whatnot's made it pretty clear to not be in there, pedestrian or whatever the case, so.
It's a little dangerous still, so. I want to brag a little bit, you know, this, Rick's been the emergency manager now for how long, Rick?
Since November.
November, so he led us through this incident very well. Also need to brag on that, our city staff did a tremendous job, you know, constantly out doing what they needed to do. But we also work very closely with the county and the county staff, and I would venture to say that not every city and county can say that we have the relationship together to make sure that we make sure these events are well-handled, but we do work well with the county, and so it's good to have that partnership. Rick serves as the county city, it's a partnership with the county for Rick to be the emergency manager for both entities, and it works very well, so.
Well said.
It went well.
Very well said.
So, good job.
Thank you for everybody's help, so it's been a great, great adventure. Any other questions?
Okay. We haven't experienced any significant obstruction downstream that has caused the flow, the CFS cubic feet per second. I noticed it was up to about 60,000. So we're not seeing any experience downstream keeping the water from flowing.
No, just simply water in front of water, and so we're waiting for it to.
Just a lot of water.
Push on, it's just a lot of water.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. Okay, items from council, anything else? Think of anything? If not, we'll just move on, we'll move forward to our work session. So we'll turn it over to you, and you start your budget presentations. Everyone should have a green binder to get.
All the splashing behind me.
Take home, and then the handouts are ready for each department.
Were we going to not ask for citizens' communication?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Let's go ahead and open the citizens' communication portion of our meeting. Anyone like to come forward and speak about anything at all? Now's the time. Just please limit your comments to five minutes or less, out of courtesy to everyone else. And we will be here tomorrow for, I don't know when this will be televised, but we'll be here the next three days in a row, just FYI, so. Okay, seeing no one coming forward, we'll close citizens' communication, and now we'll move ahead to our work session.
I mean, I just have a few comments before, Dana's going to be the first presenter for the library, but, you know, you've all, six of you have been through this before, it's new for Dan, so, but just to kind of set the stage, what we do at this stage is the department heads for the large departments will come up, talk about their budget. What we're after is direction, you know? If you see or hear something that you're not comfortable with, or not in alignment with, then we can do a course correction on what we're presenting. You will get the entire budget, the first meeting in August, that's when, you know, you'll get that three-inch document that goes into detail for each budget. But tonight, this week, it's more of direction, this is what they're proposing in their budget. So the other thing I'll remind you, we're doing it just a little different. Gilbert's going to finish up on Thursday night. We decided to wait and talk about revenues and expenses at the very last. We're going to do budget, budgets first, and then Gilbert's going to finish up with where we're at with revenues, kind of bring it all together, so. But again, this is preliminary, numbers will probably change after we get the certified tax rule in July. But Gilbert does a really good job estimating what he thinks those revenues are going to be, but there's always subject to change, so that is still preliminary at this point. So any questions of that, or where we're, we've got, I'm going to try to do four tonight. I promised you we'd do two hours, no more. So if we, if it's, we're at an hour and 30 minutes, and only three's been done, we'll wait and do that fourth one another night. So we're only scheduling one budget conversation tomorrow night, since we have a council, and that's with Public Works tomorrow night, because it'll probably take a little longer than normal. So, like I said earlier, Dana's first, so, come on, Dana.
I have the privilege tonight of kicking off this week of budget presentations, and I also wanted to just introduce my assistant director, Catherine Muehlbrad is here with me, and she has joined me this evening, and I wanted to recognize her for the excellent work she's done on a big project that you funded last year. We have been working this whole last year on updating our library material security process, and that was called RIFID, if you remember me saying that, radio frequency ID project last year during budget sessions. We have a new Security Gate, new patron self-check machine, and the project has really, really run very smoothly as far as implementation. Tonight, I'm going to present a brief overview of library services, strategic plan, budget proposal for next year, and then an eye to future projects. And, I'm not on the right slide here. First one? Let's see.
I was quick.
Thank you. Okay. Well, Victoria Public Library has opened 61 hours per week. We have about 4,400 people who walk through our doors on an average week. That equals out to about 230,000 people who walk through the doors in a year. We serve about 48,000 cardholders and additional customers of the city, the county, and the surrounding area at one physical location, and through our website. We have 27 full-time and five part-time employees. In 2014, we checked out 373,000 physical and ebook items, which was about a 10% increase over the number of items that were checked out in 2010, and the graph at the bottom of this slide just shows how we've moved, increasing that over the last five years. We provide a variety of services, from children's programming, access to popular reading materials both in physical and electronic format, computer and technology classes, workforce development and training with assistance on resume development and online job applications, access to computers, printers, and wifi, and community gathering and meeting space. The library works with multiple community partners, including Victoria Independent School District, Head Start, Workforce Development, Victoria Business and Education Coalition, UHB in Victoria College, Children's Discovery Museum, Texas Independent Film Festival, United Way, the BACH Festival, that's just to name a few of our partners in the community. Our guiding principles are outlined in the library's strategic plan, which I presented to this council, I tried to do at least an annual update on that. That plan was developed through the work of a community process, including meetings and feedback from community leaders, library staff, library advisory board, and the friends of Victoria Public Library. The plan was developed in 2011, and updated and revised in 2014. Our five main strategic goals are listed on this slide. They are early literacy, information and technology fluency, cultural awareness, lifelong learning, and providing access to a variety of popular materials in a variety of formats for all ages. So why are we so busy and involved with many different community organizations? Because we are an equalizer in accessing information and technology for those who can't afford to, or don't know how, to wade through the massive amounts of facts and knowledge available to them. We are a community builder in helping parents with children of all ages making connections with each other, and the resources needed to help their children develop early literacy skills, and continue to succeed in school even during the summer months. And we are a space for community building and meeting. We serve a diverse clientele, every age, income level, ethnicity, physical ability, providing access to a full range of tools and services that allows our users to live better, learn independently, find jobs, and improve skills. Now moving on to budget.
Dana, before you move on.
Yes.
Talking about your community partners and early literacy, you might want to mention the day of caring with the United Way, unless you're going to do that later.
Yes, okay. You would like me to go ahead and mention that now, or?
Sure.
Sure. We have a really wonderful opportunity this summer with United Way, Victoria County, and we are planning a, we're calling it back-to-school bonanza. Clifford Grimes of United Way is planning his day of caring on Thursday, August the 13th, that morning. His volunteers will be coming in and preparing some literacy packets for all the second-grade students in Victoria County region that the United Way serves. They will be assembling those packets in the morning and having their program that morning. In the afternoon, we are going to be doing a variety of activities for children from, we're inviting a lot of the preschools clear up till about the middle school age, and their parents, for what we're calling, it's kind of like a literacy fair idea. We will be focusing on different things that make reading and learning fun. For example, readers theater, we're going to, we have Scott Moen on board, and Theater Victoria's going to be doing an example of what readers theater looks like with their junior actors group. We're going to hopefully have some poetry reading. We're going to have a kids' band from Austin coming in to play. A lot of community partners will have tables set up with information about different things that parents can have access to, to help make a successful school year. And we're going to be also highlighting the services the library offers, so storytimes, crafts, and we're going to have the, something new is the Bow Wow Book Club. They're bringing in some dogs from the Dorothy O'Connor Pet Adoption Center, and they are nonjudgmental listeners for kids who like to read to the dogs, they'll have an opportunity to try that out. So just a lot of fun things we're doing on August the 13th, that's the afternoon, from 1:00 to 4:00. So really excited about that one. Okay, moving back to budget. So for this upcoming year, our proposed budget is fairly flat, and our requests kept to a minimum. So there's no new major projects or initiatives included in this budget, it is a maintenance budget. And as can be seen on this chart, our largest increase is in personnel, that's the $30,066, which is less than a 1% increase. Our second largest increase is in capital, and there is a decrease in maintenance and operation budget requests. The increases in the personnel budget reflects the city's proposed pay program only, and there's no change in the number of employees, so we're not adding any new positions. Decreases in maintenance and operations are attributed to several things. Small things are things that we've worked on to kind of make more efficient. Decrease in postage, because we use more electronic verification methods for reaching out to our users. Decreases in some printer maintenance costs, decrease in light and power line item based on previous year's use. This next slide just gives a little bit more detail on the variances. The 3% pay program would increase this line item by $30,066, as I mentioned. In the maintenance and operations line, we have decreases in office supplies, office equipment maintenance, and our library subscriptions, and light and power. And we have an increase in that electronic subscriptions line. What we've done is we've made some transfers between library subscriptions and electronic. Library subscriptions is your print line, electronic is your e-format, when I talk about ebooks and e-audiobooks. And we have also had some slight vendor increases with e-audiobooks and ebooks. Capital spending is listed here as well. The capital requests include one-time expenses for replacement of one HVAC unit at the library, some interior painting, replacement of a public copier, and updates to the library's wireless network. So that's what's listed under capital.
Going back to your maintenance and operation, the electronic versus the print, you know, y'all probably, some of you remember over the last few years, constantly evaluating where that money needs to be, whether print or electronic, so, and that, again, Dana continues to do that every year, to make that determination.
And it is an area that's changing, so we have to be kind of flexible in the, between those two lines. Finally, looking to the future. So out of necessity, a flat budget has been presented, but I still feel that there are many projects and upcoming improvements that need to be kept in mind as we look towards the next three to five years. The library remains a highly-used city service, and we are one of the busiest places downtown. But flat budgets and continual deferment of additional investment in the library and its services does not allow us to keep pace with the continued high use of our physical building, the increased growth and need for digital literacy and electronic resources in our community, to use our physical space to its maximum capacity, and we need to consider options for increasing our reach into the community further. So some of the projects which have been put on the backburner and continue to be an area of concern that we need to keep out there in front of us include development of a library pavilion, and this would be on the main street side of the building, that west side of our building. This would allow us to more fully use the existing building and the property, so what we already have on that site, increase our square footage of use there per patron. We also need to be thinking about the replacement of our carpeting. It's a necessary expense with 4,000 people coming in and out of the building daily, and that carpeting was installed in 2007. So we're getting close to the 10-year on that. Installing an elevator to our upstairs workspace, we currently have a dumbwaiter, which allows us to take a lot of the heavy boxes that need to be taken upstairs on that dumbwaiter, but really looking at elevator space that allows us to make that space ADA compliant and improve staff access, because we do have offices on the second floor. And then looking into establishment of mobile services or additional satellite building to expand our reach in the community, making our services more accessible for all. In addition to all this, I also see opportunities in the future with funding for the library to develop makerspaces, which encompass opportunities for people with similar interests to come together to learn more about technology, arts, crafts, innovation, and I think that the library is a perfect place to introduce 3D printing technology and provide this service to those for whom it is unavailable or inaccessible. So that is the overview of the budget for Victoria Public Library, and I am more than happy to answer any questions now or during the budget process as we move through it.
Nice thing about us meeting for four nights in a row, you know, if something pops up tomorrow night, you have a comment or question about the library, she will be here to answer questions. So it's not like, if you don't have, if you have something now, ask, but it's not like this is your only chance.
Yes.
On the pavilion, that's interesting, and, you know, I know that's just an artist's conception, but with, you might remember that RFID technology, you co-mingle with the security there, you wouldn't need such a big expensive wall around it.
That's right.
Think about that. You could, you may have a much less, a more visually appealing barrier if y'all can figure out how to make it part of your RFID fence.
Yes.
So just, just thinking out loud, the, and I didn't hear you, I was over here using my calculator, that decrease in light and power of $11,000, what did we attribute that to?
Can we explain that?
That's pretty significant, I thought.
Well, just basic trend in the weather.
Oh, okay.
Last year, we came in under.
Didn't need to use AC.
And this year, we had a, as you can tell, the type of weather we're having now, we're going to hit close to next year's, last year's cost too, so.
So you just decreased the budget.
Budget at the same levels as last year, so that's the cost of the decrease.
I was hoping you would tell me it's some of the infrastructure changes, or, but.
Well, we did replace the AC unit, so.
Some buildings, we did some of that stuff with lighting, I thought.
But mainly it's because it's a trend in the weather condition.
Very good.
And we did have the update on the lighting. So we have those lights that when they're not in use in certain spaces, they will turn off because of motion sensor, that's really helped. And we have the thermostats that, of course, building services controls those for us, the timing on those, and, and just watching, you know, the levels of how cold and how hot it is. So that's made it a lot nicer, too, to have that computer access to the thermostats, too, helps a lot.
Okay. I'm sure that's all reflected in that, in a small way. Very good. Counsel? Okay.
Just a, thank you, Dana, just a comment. You'll probably hear some of these other future needs. You know, all, all the departments have a nice wish list, and they're all very worthy projects, but my job at the end of the day is to try to make, to balance a budget and try to decide which departmental, you know, is a priority for the year. So what Dana presents and what she said, it doesn't mean it's not a priority, but it's just when you try to make it fit into a nice little, you know, framework for a balanced budget, sometimes we cannot fund things, so, yeah. Her pavilion idea is a great idea, and it's, we've talked about it for two years now, and I'm sure we're going to continue talking about it, so. But you'll hear that from other department heads when they talk about future needs, what they're needing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dana. So, oh, it's Colby, I was going to pass it to Jared, but I'm glad you got of it, yeah.
I want Jared to get the money before I do. You've had a fun week.
It's been interesting.
Yeah. I have to tell real quick, Colby sent me a picture, a text message with a picture of the park. Was that on Saturday or Sunday, maybe?
Saturday, yes, Sunday.
And, you know, Colby and his staff have worked diligently over the last two years to bring Riverside Park up to the level it is today, and to make it look nice, and so I sent it back and said, are you okay? Because I know it's disheartening, but his attitude was positive. He said, we'll just get back in there and start cleaning up again, so.
We'll get it going.
It's going to be all right, yeah.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. This is the 2015-16 proposed budget for Parks and Recreation. At any time through this presentation, if you've got any questions or anything at all, just let me know, and I'll stop and we'll talk about it. We've got 46 employees spread out through Parks and Recreation, six of those are with the, the community center. We've got parks mowing and maintenance, 21, what we call flood buyout is one, right-of-way mowing's five, recreation programming is two, athletic fields, eight, and administration is three. One thing that we did, and I talked about this at my presentation last year that I was working on, and that, what you would see this year, is, is we started parks maintenance standards. This is something that we do internally in our, in our department. Quarterly, we go through and we grade our parks, and, and so that helps me develop what are our strengths of our park system, what are our weaknesses? And we do that, whether it's, sometimes we have our crew leader, sometimes we'll have recreation go out. I vary that on, on who goes out and judges that, so that, a fresh set of eyes looking at the park. This is the standards that we've come up with right now. This will, will change, you know, over the course of the year, but it, it helps me develop, like I said, those strengths and weaknesses. It helps me look at the entire park system, not just really focused on one area or not, and where we're ranking, what we're doing. Our target goal is 85%, and so by getting that target goal and setting these standards, now I'm able to start working on my budgets of how these, where I'm going with proposed projects. And, and in the future, you'll continue to see this come through and, and see when I'm starting to. to present projects of where it's hitting on those lines as, you know, this year, we may be focused more on Riverside. When Riverside starts to get that higher level, we'll move over to the other parks. Does that make sense?
It's like the street grading program, in a way.
Exactly.
Tell us what you're looking for when you're doing those.
We're looking at, you know, are picnic tables looking good? Is there any graffiti on those picnic tables? Are fence lines, you know, correct? Are they not bent up? Or, you know, is our fall zones right? Is the mowing done correctly, you know? And so just a different, a bunch of different questions. There's probably 60 to 70 questions on each park, and the amenities in the parks that we go through and grade, just as a quick yes or no type thing. And they're not, our staff doesn't know when these are coming, and we put them on them and go out there to see it. So it's been a very good tool that we've used so far.
So just your employees do the grading?
Yes, sir.
How often?
Quarterly.
Quarterly. Yeah.
In our park system, right now, on the Parkland mowing, we've got 631-plus acres. That is, it's 546 and 1/2 man-hours per cycle, and we get roughly 20 to 22 of those per year, depending on what the weather's like. Miscellaneous non-park mowing, that would be the library, some of our other facilities that we take care of, just over seven acres, and it's 90 hours, and we as well get 20 to 22 cycles on there. Our right-of-way mowing, this number was really shocking to me, is 521 miles, or acres of right-of-way mowing. And that's a lot. And it takes, it's 380 man-hours per cycle. With those, we do get 10 to 12 per year. Flood, sorry?
I got to put you on the spot. Why was it shocking? It's just, your former...
No, you just don't, you don't think about it that much. You don't think about it, you know, you've got three or four guys that go out, and you're really not, you're not focused on it until you start driving the loop and you start, it's just, it's really a lot of different areas that you would not take into account that parks does. You know, those are non-park mowing facilities that is, that we don't, that, you know, you wouldn't consider Parks and Recreation, and so that's where it's really shocking.
Yeah, they're not recreational areas.
That's right.
They're just right-of-way.
That's right.
Years ago, the street department was responsible for that, and parks took it over. And Colby, for the last two years, has been trying to give it back.
Well, you've proven yourself in your department, good at being mowers. You don't tell Lynn that.
You've done a great job, so, sorry. Lynn came mow, he can build streets, but, you know, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Well, as Colby says, he'll give him the equipment.
I'll give him the equipment. No problem.
I have a question on that, too.
Yes.
Because you said right-of-way, and then you talked about the loop, but is this also the rights-of-way, the little strips outside of all of the subdivisions?
Some of them, just depends on what the basis, like you have a real quick example is, I guess it's Ben Wilson, it runs between east and Beltar area right there. It depends on how wide it is. We go a certain amount, and then the homeowners will take it to a certain amount. And that was done historically by my predecessor, as far as how big those areas were. And so we, it's really a scattered list. I'd have to bring it to you one time to show you. It's just, some of them, it's just because it's the way it's been done, is that, and we're looking into those to find out, okay, what is the case and why are we doing those? And, you know, do those need to go back to the homeowner and stuff? We're working real well with code enforcement on those issues like that.
Because homeowner's actually supposed to take care of to the back of the curb.
Yes.
And so there's some cases where, you know, with fences, where it's difficult for homeowners to get to, so we've done some of that. But we really want the homeowners to take care of their property.
Most of the stuff now, if it's not our routine maintenance, the code enforcement's done a great job as far as taking that back on and not just pushing it over to parks. They have really worked hard to get that either to the homeowner or to a private contractor. We've been relieved of that in the last year and a half, and so.
I want to be clear, I'm not talking about that area between the edge of the yard and the street in the residential area.
Right.
Just so that everybody's clear, that's not what I'm talking about at all.
Right, right.
I'm talking about the area between the edge of the subdivision and the street. For instance, up and down John Stockbauer or across Ben Jordan, those drips that are outside of those various subdivisions that are three feet to six feet wide.
Thoroughfares.
Thoroughfares.
Thoroughfares, well, hang on.
Okay.
Some, not all.
Yes.
Some, not all. Okay.
And that's still a learning process with me, exactly which one those are.
Okay, just so everybody else is clear that, you know, I'm not talking about in front, I don't want you mowing in front of my house. That's not what I'm asking.
Going to leave big ruts.
One of the other things that we have introduced and really started to increase is our herbicide spraying. We do 74-miles herbicide spraying. That is gutters, that's curbing gutter areas that we do spray. And so we have specifically put two staff members on that that go out, and so we really tried to increase that and make that a routine every nine weeks. That every nine weeks, we are going north, south, east, and west on our major thoroughfares to make those look better and not to have those nine weeks. Now, that's hurt us this last, you know, few months, but that is what it's taken us to do it, and we're really putting a more focus on that type of program. Another thing, in the recreation programs, this is very similar to the park maintenance. We're looking at every event that we do and looking at what is the cost participant, per participant that we're using. So we're making sure that we're spending our money wisely and best, and reevaluating every program and not just saying, this is a program that we've done for 15 years, we got to continue to do it. We're looking at what are our costs. That recreation part of the budget is very small, and so we want to get the most bang for the buck out of that is. And so this is a relatively new program that we started, and so I would imagine as the next year or so come up, you'll start to see these numbers move, and we may be moving programs around that we, you know, aren't becoming cost-effective to us.
I'm going to ask the question, why is flag football at $15 compared to softball or kickball?
Flag football is a new program that we just started, it's in its second season of that, and so we're trying to build our team base on there. And so that's what we are looking at on, on what is that cost and what, if you'll remember in the fee structures that we just did, where we allowed, where you allowed me to be able to set those fees, that's what this will help manage, is it gives that ability for us to look at, okay, is this a program that we want to do, and how much do we need to charge to be able to do it effectively? Where before, it was $300. And that way, I can go back in now, and staff can internally look at and say, this program's not effective for us, but do we still want to have it? Okay, if we do, we need to get that number back down to an acceptable level, and then I can adjust the rate if need be.
What's an acceptable level?
That would be a question that is, do you view this as a service to the community? Do you view this as a program that is, you know, something that's needed? You know, you could go in and say, okay, are movies in the park are one of our better-rated? We need to have more of those, but we don't, okay, let's don't do softball. Now you're affecting a group of people that are playing softball, so we just got to make sure that we're not getting those out of balance, in a sense, like the flag football is.
I'm just looking at athletics things, and it's double the, what normally the others are, so.
That's true. And it's something internal, we are looking at.
I know it's been addressed. Thank you.
Sure. As far as this year's presented budget, in the blue is 2015, in the red is 2016. On personnel, we are up $38,000. That has contributed to the pay program. We are also implementing, in the department, a step-type of program where we're able to go from a maintenance level one to a maintenance level three, and very specific steps to be able to get there. Previously, before this program, somebody that came into the parks department would not be able to move up when they learned better skills. They're still at that entry-level position. We didn't have anywhere for them to go unless they transferred to another department or we had somebody that retired. Our higher-end jobs that we have, we don't, we're not losing those very often. We're wanting to give our new employees and our lower employees the ability to gain skills and with that, not lose them, keep them in our department, and give them raises when they meet certain criterias. For this program, we've, this year, we've put half of that in, into this year's budget. What we went through, Gilbert and I went through, and we classified each employee and where we thought they could be in this next year, and went to that raise. And then next year, if they were level one, we're not, we didn't budget for them to jump up to a level three. Automatically, we budget them as a level two, and then next year, we'll bring them in as a level three. That does not mean they will get that raise, but it gives us the opportunity, if they do meet that criteria, then we can give them the pay to justify what they've learned and what they've done. Does that make sense?
Is that in addition to the regular 3%?
It's kind of like a promotional-type deal, based on skills-based, if they reach certain, we call it a career ladder. You know, they've got to achieve certain skills.
But they will get the basic 3%? Okay.
Yes.
Just in case they don't. Because some people are happy right where they're at, but for those employees that have that desire to learn more, and, you know, then it's a way for them to do that. And like Colby said, hopefully retain them.
Yes.
So that's our goal.
Yes, it is. Our operating budget has gone down $172,000. A lot of that has contributed to one-time money that we had in that area with the, for an example of that would be the money that was for the convention center drawings was in there that's not being requested in there. And so that's where, most of that stuff in there. There are some operational costs that we saw savings in, but very flat for the most part. Most of that is one-time money. The capital, you see a big increase there, that is for the building. Our finance director wanted to make sure that we stuck that in our, in the budget so that it was very visible of where that was going to be and not, you know, gets, get into a backside of a street program or something of that nature. So it's very visible where that money's going to be coming from.
That building is still in dry land?
It's what?
It's still in dry land?
Were we proposed putting the building, yes. Well, even Colby's old building is still dry. It's high enough, but, yes, it will be.
And we can get to it?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Was that the building in the picture that we saw earlier?
I think that was Riverside.
No, that was Convention Center. Yes, that was a Convention Center.
He doesn't want to move in there.
These are the major projects that we're proposing this year. You've got Grover's Bend Playground, we'll replace that playground. We will demo the pool. We'll add a nine-hole disc golf course to the Fox Bend area. Do some replacement at the duck pond as far as the sidewalks. We're going to partnership with Challenge Athletes to create an all-inclusive playground. They are looking at matching that, so it'd be a $300,000 playground at Riverside Park. And so that, we feel like that's a very good tool. It's going to be a program, you would not notice anything different, but it's going to be available for all kids to be at, not, you know, all of our playgrounds are ADA-accessible, but that doesn't mean that they're easy to be played along by everyone. And so that's what this inclusive playground will be. Of course, you have the parks building, and then Riverside Park Restrooms remodel. We will gut both restrooms at restroom one and Riverside, at Grover's Bend, and replace them with all-new structures, go through there and sandblast the walls and repaint everything there. Anything up top that needs to be replaced, as far as electrical lighting, we'll go in and replace everything. And so we'll just, we'll keep the shell of it and replace everything inside of it.
I thought you couldn't demo them because of the, in a flood way or something?
You can, but there's steps that you have to go through to do that, and we just felt this was an easier way for us to, you know, the cinder block walls are fine, and so just being able to go through there and sandblast and replace the structure in them, I think will help out a lot.
And the dog park's still a work in progress. I know there's a lot of fundraising going on there, so that's not too early for all that. Okay.
I did want to point out that these projects may change depending on what damage we have from the river. You know, depending on what happens there after the waters go down and we're able to assess that, we may have to move some of the money around on these to take care of our current facilities that we have, if it's a large item that can't be done within this year's budget money. Our community center budget, it's relatively flat as well. You have a small increase in personnel. M&amp;O is a small decrease. The capital on there is a large increase, but I'm going to that next. That is going to be, we're going to, we're proposing to finish out the community center remodel. As many of you know, we did the annex, we did some of the dome kitchen, we did some painting on the outside. We're looking at finishing this facility. That would be the lobby, the dome redo, redo the annex kitchen area, put some fans in the arena, the, replace the acoustical panels, and then do some work outside and landscaping and to the portico.
Colby, do you know if y'all, I know it's not in this budget, because I don't see it, to put a floor down in the arena?
Did we put a floor down in the arena?
Uh-huh. Apparently, there was a study done when Gabe was on the council, and he asked if we could look into that, because we had, y'all had talked about it then.
It was part of this study. At the time, council wasn't interested in remodeling that to do a floor, but you're talking about, so it could be used for like exhibits and all, and not just the dirt.
Uh-huh. And get more use, you know, and get more use out of the community center.
That's not in this projected budget. I could, I can find out what an estimated cost or what that would be and bring that back, if you'd like me to.
Councilwoman, the gist of the study said it would be cheaper to tear that structure down and build new than it would be to go in, add flooring, and insulation, and air-conditioning, electrical, and the whole nine yards. Kind of like the Riverside Convention Center thing.
Yeah, but he was just talking about the floor, not enclosing it.
I guess that's true, yeah.
Take the dirt out.
In a limited fashion, that might work.
And then if we have a rodeo or something, we'd have to bring dirt in for those events.
Right, right.
You're not talking, you're just talking, replace the dirt flooring with maybe a concrete surface? Okay, I can figure out that number.
Yeah, something like that. So that way, you could use that for exhibits later.
Colby, how do you feel about the parking? Seems like sometimes that facility is overflowing with cars. And has there already thought about additional parking in that green space, or is that even possible? Or do we need parking at this point?
That's the, if, do we need it? I know we've talked before, there should be adequate parking to accommodate multiple events going on, so it's designed that way, but we've not looked at, it's, you can do, you can take some green space and make more parking if you wish to.
Well, I've seen, in my experience, going out there, a lot of people parking in the green area.
Okay.
Port of Strowman, the overflow.
Uh-huh.
Which leads me to believe, well, we're not utilizing either the back part of the parking lot or behind the building, or we're at capacity at times with parking, which may also, I know we've got capacity issues in the building, where we've hit maximum people capacity.
Yes, sir.
So it may not even behooves to put more parking if we can't put more people in the building. So I don't know how that, how that jives, but I have seen a lot of cars parking that green space.
We have added, Mr. Alvarez, we have added in our, the ability for, if you wanted to rent the dome and you didn't want another facility, another, the other two areas to be rented, that you could rent that, and that way, you wouldn't have multiple events going on. That is something that has been brought up, and we've been able to do that, so it can stop that for having, when we get in trouble in those parts, when we had three events going on at the same time, that's when that parking lot gets so big that you can't park there. So we've had that ability. Now, you don't have to take that, you know, that option, but there is that option available to customers.
Well, I just, to look at additional parking, if that's feasible or not.
Okay. Sure.
And that is my presentation, unless there's questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gilbert, Colby needs some money in his office supplies for toner. Colby, so, well, is that, trying to save money there, so?
Oh, okay.
He's got enough for, you got toner money?
I wondered why it was kind of light. I said, okay, we're going lighter.
Gilbert's probably cut him out on his office supply budget.
Maybe I'm all just like this.
Okay, Jared, Development Services, do what?
Need a nickel, please.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Want to also take this opportunity to introduce my assistant director. I think several of y'all have met her, but if you haven't, I have Julie Fulgham with us. She's been with us since October, last October. So, anyway.
Have her stand up so everybody up here can see her. She hides behind Lynn. Thank you, Julie.
All right, we'll get into it. The Development Services Department is made up of 26 employees, divided into four divisions. Some of y'all have seen something similar to this last year. We have seven employees in what we call the Planning Services Division that takes care of planning commission, administers the CDBG and MPO grants. The Development Center, which is our permitting and building inspections function, has 10 employees. There are five in Cut Enforcement and four in the GIS Mapping Division. Give you a snapshot of the activity that's been going on over the last three years. Man, those slides are hard to read up there. Good thing you have it in front of you. As you can see, the Cut Enforcement cases, we, fairly consistent activity of averaging around 3,300 or 3,400 cases that they're managing a year. The next few line items, you can start, you can see the buildup of the development activity that we've been talking about over the last few years. Billing inspections, from a little over 7,000 in 2012 to over 10,000 this past fiscal year. New homes permitted, 155 last year. We're holding steady with this first six months, around 12 to 13 a month in that activity. Plotted over 500 lots last year, and did $168 million in permit activity last year. So I think that was our peak. We're seeing that certainly, I don't want to say activity slowed down, but the, those high permit values of, of multimillion dollar apartment complexes have not occurred in the last six months. So I think we're around 50, 52, 55 million for this current fiscal year, just to kind of give you an idea of where we at, or are at. Moving on into the budget, see where we are in 2015 and where we're proposing to be in 2016, relatively, as others have mentioned, the maintenance budget. Personnel, slight increase of $43,050, which is attributable, for the most part, to the across, proposed across-the-board raise. Our maintenance and operation is down, except for some planned one-time expenses that I'll talk about in a moment. Capital items are also down about $15,000. And you can see for an overall difference, when you take into account the one-time expenses, of about an $81,000 increase over last year. Couple of slides here that sort of break that down. Personnel, there's a little bit of a carryover for the 3% pay-for-performance that was in this year's budget. As I mentioned, the 3% across the board, and then some adjustments for some personnel changes that have happened over the last 12 months, for an overall increase in personnel of $43,050. On the MNO, we're expecting, we have an increase in our software, software maintenance for the new Intergov software, which will hopefully still come online in late November, early December. Proposing two vehicle replacements, two trucks for our billing inspectors, little increase in our mileage reimbursement, increase in bank merchant charges for the credit card processing. We have a decrease in contract labor overall for the department, and that's attributable, attributable to our sale of Swan Crossing lots. That's starting to, finally, that, that maintenance cost, so that subdivision is coming down. And we're also decreasing the contract amount that Cut Enforcement uses to do abatement on private property. We haven't been spending as much of the money that's been budgeted in that account. And there's also a proposed decrease in demolition of $10,000, again, because we haven't been spending all of the money that is budgeted. As you can see, that's an overall increase of $55,643. Capital is a decrease. We had copiers and computers last year, and there are fewer of the, fewer of those this year, giving you a, a decrease of $15,100. And then kind of a summary of the one-time or the variances. Recall, this current year, we've had the Conference of Plan Update and the Quiet Zone Study, which I understand John is going to be giving you a presentation on that later this month. Those two were $195,000 together. And then we have 90,000, 97,200 in one-time expenses planned for 2016. That would be for a new set of aerial photography that we would partner with the Appraisal District for, and some additional plan of metrics, excuse me, that would, plan of metrics for those nifty lines you see on GIS that pick up sidewalks and utility poles and driveway cuts. Those are the line items, were, the items we're hoping to pick up off the new aerial photography to help out Public Works in designing some of their projects. And then also a small increase, small amount of money to continue the Conference of Plan that'll help us with our public involvement, printing, and just some supplies for that. So that is kind of my budget in a nutshell. Any questions? Yes, sir.
The status of the Quiet Zone Study?
John's presenting it on the 16th. This John, on the 16th.
It was put in my budget, but it was city manager project.
Do you know the total cost of that flyover aerial photography for that contract? I know Mr. Alvarez is on that board. He may know, but-
The city's portion is $65,000.
So, oh, okay. You don't happen to recall?
I don't know what the whole, overall.
Well, our percent is relative to the other taxing authorities. You don't?
I don't know. All the taxing authorities don't participate in it. I don't believe.
This is, this, this $65,000 buys us higher resolution for the city lemons and portions of the ETJ. It's not like a pro-rata share of overall cost. We could choose-
They do indirectly, but I actually-
Well, I got you. But we, we ask for this addition.
We ask for additional resolution that lets you, lets us really be able to get down as you, as you zoom into the images to, to do our work.
Because we've done it before.
Yes, sir.
This is not the first time, yeah.
We did this in 2013.
It's not every year, but, because I hadn't seen it last year.
I think he's trying to do it every three years here.
They're trying to, yes. The Appraisal District had been, I believe, on a kind of a five-year rotation. They've moved that to a three-year, and certainly with the significant development activity we've happened, we've been having, every, the three-year rotation is, is necessary.
It's a call saver for us, though, versus us going out and doing it on our own.
Well, the detail's pretty good, too.
Yes, it's.
Very good.
We don't have-
Wish they'd give us warning about it. I don't want to be sunbathing or-
The resolution's not quite that good.
They will not tell you. Now, Mr. Alvarez, they won't tell you when to do it. It's because I've asked, so.
I know.
Well, they, they also do it in, in late February, early March, when the leaves are off of the-
It's a little cooler.
So you're probably not out sunbathing during that time, but never know. Any other questions?
Thank you, Jared.
Pretty serious bunch here tonight. I would say that we could go, keep going.
That one's not mine.
Let me do a clarification real quick. Jan's asking, so somebody doesn't wonder what she's asking me about. We, we refer to the fiscal year 15, 16 as 16. I know, you know, so the year, the budget year we're in right now is actually 14, 15, but we always call it 15. And so what we're doing is what starts October 1, which is actually 15 through 16. Does that make sense?
I'm just not clear on why there, why there are variances, one for fiscal year 15 and one for fiscal year 16. It kind of seems like one of them would not be involved right now. Or, and I didn't know whether it was calendar year 15 or-
What's the difference between this budget and that budget?
Oh, he's just showing one-time variant.
One-time variances.
One-time expenses is all one-time expenses on the-
One of the main reasons they do that is to show you the reoccurring operation. You want to take those out, so you can see what's really happening from year to year on a reoccurring program basis.
It's really not a variance, though, really, truly. It's what his one-time expense was in 15, and then what his one-time expense was in 16. It's, yeah, it's really-
It's a reminder.
It's, yeah, it's really not a variance.
Okay, they're not both in there.
No, that's right.
Thank you.
Makes sense. So Darrell's standing up before you, and we, we talked today about we should, he's going to change his lead-off, but go ahead, Darrell.
You can go with the good news.
Now, I'll let you do the lead-off.
The good news is there's no rate increase this year on garbage services.
We're not recommending one.
Not recommending one.
Now, council can always override that.
If you decide you want to do one, we're-
That's right. Council can always override.
We need some more money for parks.
Chances of a decrease?
No.
That was a quick answer.
We start talking like that, I'm done. So I'm here tonight to talk about the Environmental Services Budget, which really includes solid waste, yard waste, the tree limb collection, recyclable material collection, that's the every other week curbside, household hazardous waste, our air quality and water quality education and activities that we do. Just kind of a little bit of history, looking at May 1, 2013, through April 30, 2014, and then the same period, May 1, 2014 to May 4, or to April 30, 2015. You can see on garbage, we went from 19 point, or 19,140 tons to 20,992 tons, the increase of about 1,800 tons. Yard waste, we actually went down. We went down about 90 tons on yard waste. Now, I want to caution you, because we've had all this rain, a lot of weekends, which is when most of the yard waste get, yard waste gets accumulated, has been rainy weekends. So I look for that to change, but the other issue this year that we're going to have is because it's rained so far into the year, we're going to have yard waste. Usually by end of June, we're picking up very little. I don't think that's going to happen this year. I think we're going to see it accumulate just a little later in the year. Recycled materials, still up, still averaging about 70%. We went from 31,35 to 34,57, about 322 tons more than we did last year. Household hazardous waste, we dropped off a little bit, about three tons from 59 to 56. Charmella had asked me just kind of how many people use that. On average, about 90 to 93 households a month that give us stuff. Now, we saw a huge amount of that at first. If you'll remember, when we first started this, I mean, we were doing 100, 150 homes a month. Once we got rid of all those old TVs and we got rid of all those old computers, it's kind of slowed down. What we see now in the reports I get is, is we're still kind of high on the computers and TVs, but we're getting a lot more of the paint, a lot more of the old pesticides, herbicides, things like that. So it is still a vital part of our program that gets used on a regular basis. And then residential garbage accounts, 19,474 last year. This year, we're up to 19,610, so an increase of about 136 customers. You'll see Jared's number's a little different than mine, but you got to remember, when people move out, I get vacant houses. My number changes month to month, depending on move-ins, move-outs, that's rentals, whatever. So my number always will be a little different than his. This is what we actually bill on the UBO bill each, each month.
Darrell?
Yes, ma'am.
So when you're, you have somebody that moves out and comes back in and they start again, do you count them as a new customer then?
I, I count them as a garbage service. I don't count them as a new customer. I just look strictly at garbage services.
Okay.
So my number, if somebody moves out, it'll drop from 19,610 to 19,605 one month. In the next month, it might be 19,640. It just comes and goes.
Okay, I see what you mean.
This is our proposed budget for this year. And personnel, you'll see that we've actually gone down about 24,569, and I'll explain that in a future slide. Our MNO is actually up 1,004. Our capital is up about 23,000. Our total budget is up about $1.436 million. Here's kind of what we've done. On the personnel side, we're down about 24,569. It, the biggest part of that is reduction in overtime. Between some things that we've done in the past, some things that we're going to do in the future that I'll get to in just a minute, even though we're adding a route, we're still going to be able to cut down our personnel cost. Maintenance and operation, here's the big number, $1.485 million to purchase five automated trucks. Four replacements. I've got trucks, now automated trucks, that are seven years old. Two years ago, we put arms on those to get some more time out of them. Those first seven trucks that we've got are at the point, they need to be replaced. They spend more time down than they do on the street. A lot of you have seen us picking up the gray containers with rear loaders. That's because I'm having trouble keeping those trucks up. And then our capital is up about 23,400. We're going to, our plan is to tear down the old building at Pine Street that used, that served as a recycle center for a while. It's become a place of contention over the last several years with people coming down the railroad tracks, going in there, breaking in, smashing windows, lighting fires, all different kinds of things. So in our opinion, it'd just be good to get rid of it. And then some new carpet in our offices over at 700 Main Street, the environmental offices. Here's the no rate increase slide, just to make sure that we get it out to the public. That's your current rates that you're paying now, the rates you'll be paying for next year, and all zeros down the increase side. Here's the proposed route changes I mentioned earlier that's helping us save the money. Currently, we run five automated routes, four days a week. Due to the increase of customers that we've had over the seven, last seven years, plus the extra carts that we've got out on the street, we need to increase that. We've got guys working until 9 o'clock at night sometimes. Part of that's because of the older trucks, but part of it's also just because we've, we started these routes out at 800, 900 homes a route per day, and we're now picking up 1,200 and 1,300 a day. We've got to get that back to a manageable number. And so what our, what we propose is that we go to six routes, four days a week. What we're going to do, if you'll look at the next line, the semi-automated, that we currently do that picks up the dead ends in town, they do some regular garbage, but they start out, they work half a day picking up dead ends, they work the other half of the day picking up yard waste. What we're going to do is we're going to take those two individuals, one of them will go to a full-time recycle route, one of them will go to a full-time automated route. And that will give us two full-time recycle guys, two full, that extra automated guy all week, and do away, next year, we will not have any more rear loaders picking up trash. And then what we will do is take those two and a half routes that we had working four days a week on yard waste, move them to two routes, take those half-day routes, and we'll have a fifth day. So we'll be picking up yard waste five days a week next year. Future items, and I clicked to this kind of quick, but I wanted to get to it because of the route changes. We don't expect to start this, if approved by council, until at least January, but probably February 1. I won't see those new trucks until January, if I'm lucky. It may be later than that. But we want to do a really good job getting out to the public. And, and we're moving, with these route changes, we are going to have to move some people, but we're moving the smallest amount of people that we have to. We went through, we have spent months, the software that we purchased a few years ago, that routing software, is what has allowed us to do this. And we can pick out areas of the city, pick out the smallest groups of people to move. And we will be doing a very in-depth, a lot of personal visits to make sure that a month ahead of time, we get these people on their new schedule so that they understand, and it's not just boom, you know, we're throwing the switch on this. It's important that they know well ahead of time where, when they're going to get picked up and when their days are changed. Not everybody's going to get changed. Probably, I think we figured out it was less than 1% are going to end up with actual change. So also a future item, we've got to continue to monitor carts. We've got carts that have been out there now, seven years, almost seven and a half years. We're starting to see them come in with the broken wheels. We're starting to see them come in with the broken lids, different things like that. Some of it is abuse. You know, we're picking them up, setting them down. You get a truck that gets off sometimes, it'll set them down hard, but a lot of it's just age. A lot of it's just age. We can't expect these carts to last forever. If we get 10 years out of most of them, we're good, but we're already at seven. We're starting to see those come in. So we're going to have to start looking at replacing those, some type of a schedule. And city managers talked to me about, you know, let's kind of put a schedule together and let's not try and hit them all at once. We'll look at having to replace the other three side-load trucks that were bought originally. We think we can push that out with the new trucks to 17, 18 timeframe. And then we'll, we'll have in 2025 about 28.2 acres to close at the landfill. We've got that listed right now. That may go back farther. It may come sooner. We've kind of coincided that with kind of the end of Republic's contract and different things like that, because they'll be responsible for a portion as well. And with that, I'll take any questions.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Somebody asked me this. I was at a school function, and they said to ask if the carts- Somebody asked me this, I was at a school function, and they said, to ask if the carts, when we replace them again, is it the heaviest lid that you can get? Because he says sometimes, you know, he gets tickets because the lid opens, and sometimes it's just the wind, it's not necessarily that he's overfilled his cart, and I don't know what you could do about that, but-
There are a couple of things you can do. One option is kinda off the table for us, and that's, they actually make a lid that has a cord on the front that hooks into a hole in the lid. Of course, then you do away with your automated service, because we'd have to get out and open them. The other thing that we do is we coach our drivers. I mean, if we've got a day where the wind's blowing, especially like we've had the last couple of weeks, um, if they drive by and the lid's open, and the whole street's lid's open, unless there's something sticking way up out of the top, we should be going ahead and servicing the car. So I would ask him to, or ask customers to, if we've got a windy day and we left your cart and you're tagged and there's four or five people around you that's tagged, we need to know about it. Call our office and, and, and we'll take care of it.
Is there any position you could put the cart so it wouldn't, it might help a little bit if you angle it, or, you know, sometimes you set it straight, but then I've seen it-
That's just gonna depend on what street you live on and which way your house faces. During, during the summertime, you know, if you're on a, a street that faces the south, your lid's gonna blow open. During the winter, if you face the north, it's gonna blow open. Unfortunately, it's really not, uh, because we, we still need them facing the curb. If you turned it around to keep the lid closed, we're gonna tear that lid up a lot sooner.
Okay.
If we glue a little piece of two-by-four on top, are we gonna get in trouble?
That does not bother us at all. As long as it's on the top, on the inside of the lid.
On the inside?
On the inside of the lid.
Okay.
That'll hold it down a little better.
What happens is, is if you put it on the outside of the lid, we go to pick it off, and your glue breaks, I've got a smashed windshield on the side of the truck. Possibly.
Makes sense, so put it on the inside, all right.
Okay.
Yes, sir, underneath the inside of the lid.
Okay.
You can even put screws to the top, we're fine with that. That may, that way it holds, but on the outside, we prefer not to have anything on the outside of the cart, because when we pick that up, it's gonna come off at some point.
Okay, good idea.
So what's the, what's the life expectancy of those, uh, automated trucks?
I think, you know, if we get seven years out of them, we're doing good. Most of the time, around five. Um, that arm's moving over a thousand times a day.
When we develop the, the rates on the new system, we assume seven years.
Your, uh, how's your tree limb collection efforts? Everybody pretty much in compliance, or we still have any-
Yes, sir, we still have an issue from time to time, um, and I will tell you, most of the issues that we have that deal with tree limbs are, is an education thing. Um, we get out as much as we can, we talk as much as we can, but there's a certain part of the population that's just really hard to reach. Um, so, you know, we've done UBO stuffers, we've done billboards, we've done TV commercials, um, we've tried to address it in every way, but we still get those calls, I didn't know what to do. Um, and so we have to address those, but we're tagging them, then they've got essentially 14 days to get it picked up before code enforcement actually takes any type of action. So, once they get that tag, if they call us, we get it set up and, and it gets, it gets picked up. Now, we have not been behind on our quarterly pickups. I mean, we've managed to stay, we're actually ahead right now. We were able to go in and pick up stuff in Greens Edition last week to make sure it didn't impede anything.
We, we asked Darryl to do a sweep of those areas we thought were gonna flood, just so there wouldn't be anything in the ditches, and they did a good job doing that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna go?
No. I don't think anybody's ready to go tonight. They're all shaking their head, no.
Okay.
So.
No further business?
Uh, no.
And remember, council, just if you have other questions, bring your binder, wiki. Ask again tomorrow night.
Call us.
We're adjourned.